Called this regular meeting of city council to order October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one here at City Hall. I have one addition to the agenda under new business code enforcement. Are there any other additions to the agenda this evening? I ask for a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, citizens comments. Do we have any citizens comments this evening? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda. Approved minutes. Regular council meeting, October fifth, twenty twenty-one. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, appropriation ordinance, ten nineteen, twenty twenty-one. The amount of seven, seventy-two thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Two abstain, three approve. Okay, Mike's Auto Service Incorporated in the amount of two thousand ninety-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Foley Equipment in the amount of four thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars and eight cents. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, R and R hearing and budget hearing.
So we need to open the R and R hearing and then close out of it and approve the resolution and let go into the budget hearing. I did it last time. And were you here?
I wasn't here for that. So we just.
So we recessed.
So we just recessed regular. Okay, all right, recessed this meeting of regular council and opened the hearing, the R and R hearing and budget hearing.
No, just R and R.
Just R and R, excuse me. Is there any?
Any, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, are there any comments this evening for the R and R hearing this evening?
Because it was already supposed to be the state.
Okay, so we just need to approve?
Close out and then approve the other.
Okay, close out the R and R hearing and open up the regular council meeting again. It's gonna get annoying.
Resolution twenty twenty-one. I'd make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one oh nine.
Second. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, close out regular council meeting and open the budget hearing.
Yeah, everything's the same. It just didn't get sent to the paper, so we have to redo it. It got sent to the paper.
They just never published it, okay.
So it's the exact same thing.
So we just need a motion to approve. We need to come out. So there's no comments? Okay, end the budget hearing and reopen city council meeting.
I would make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
Sign both of those copies in a minute.
Okay, moving ahead. Department heads, electrical department, Jeff.
I think the only thing I've got new is that the base is port for the engine. The company that has the engine in their shop been notified that they can set it anytime, November fifth or after. So it'll be about a week from next Monday. So they wanted it to cure two weeks before they did. We had some alterations on the floor. There's, if you've ever been down there, there's wood floor all the way around those engines where the piping and stuff runs. And the base, the old base that we jackhammered out, wasn't quite the same as the new base, and they had to modify some corners, and so that meant modifying some floors, so, to get it back in. So we're doing that and getting everything tucked back in so it's ready for them guys when they show up. So we're still working on terminating the spacer cable over here at the rest home. We've got just a little bit to do on it, and we can cut it all over and just trimming trees and everything else. So it's kind of where we're at.
All right, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jeff under electrical department? Okay, thank you, Jeff. Moving on, water department, Jason.
Well, not much on water. I'm just gonna touch base with you guys on Mayor. Like we said earlier, they're having a little bit of COVID problems, so it'd be skip a week because they got COVID. They'd come back and then find out they'd have another episode, so they'd all have to take off another week. But other than that, they came back again, so we'll see how long they can go this time without getting COVID.
How far along are they?
I think they only had the one spool left.
Yeah, I think they're about done.
Maybe I got it wet. They're gonna have an episode, I guess. They didn't get one hole drilled tapped, which, you know that one. So they went back and got it, and that's it for that.
All right, anything else?
None whatsoever.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Jason under water department? Okay, moving on, street and park department, again, Jason.
Right now, we're just trying to get the buildings ready for winter. Got a lot of winter eyes doing, replacing a lot of rod of wood or trim boards. We're getting painted, putting new rubber around all the doors, walk-in doors. We got a good time to do it. I noticed when the wind was blowing here, was it last Wednesday, you could just hear it whistling through the door, so I thought it's a good time to get it done. So let's just do it. So we're doing that right now. And then I kind of lied to you on the sewer part of it, but I'm trying to find a manhole over there by Jamie's, by Phil's. And so if you see a crater over there, don't think nothing of it. Because I talked to Mayor to see if they couldn't go over there and camera that from the post office alley that way a half a block and see if we can't find that thing, because I don't want to dig the whole street up. The map shows one there, there's gotta be one there. If there isn't, then I'll fill the hole back in, not worry about it. But we're reaching short of that hole down behind her house, and we can't get the full line cleaned up. So that's why I want to find it. And other than that, we're just gonna go after this is done. I'm gonna change some lights for the police department, and then we're gonna go back to trimming trees.
Sounds good. Okay, anybody's got anything for Jason under street and park department? The water towner, just gonna wait till spring to do that? Is that what the plan is?
I'm not sure. I emailed, so I emailed Adam and, what's the sale guy's name that we talked to?
Rick.
Right. So I emailed both of them, and Adam's no longer working there, and that was supposed to be our paint crew. So we're supposed to know by the end of month what the schedule's gonna look like. I don't know that right now is a good time to do, I don't know. I don't know anything about it.
We talked earlier, and you said that there was some holdup when they were down in Texas. Is that what it was?
That's what they kept saying. They had projects down in Texas, and Rick just keeps saying he wants to find the best crew and so, and then the best crew.
I suppose COVID is affecting that as well, so.
That's, yeah, I checked on it. So we're supposed to know by end of month. If I don't hear anything, I'll check back in.
I'm gonna be upset if it's in March.
Well, I was actually looking at the payments. I'm like, so do we pay them this year?
The price of everything.
Yeah.
Stick to it.
Yeah, we signed a contract with them, so.
Anybody else got anything for Jason under street and park department? Okay, moving on, police chief, Chief Perez.
I don't have anything.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for Chief Perez this evening? Moving on, our chief, Chief Sanders. Do we have to hear anything from Chief Sanders? Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns? Pass on to Chief Sanders. Okay, moving on to city administrator, Jamie.
I don't have anything.
You don't have nothing? Moses, let's hurry up and move on. Anybody got anything for Jamie this evening? Okay, city attorney, John.
I don't have anything.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns for John this evening? Okay, is there anything under old business council would like to discuss this evening?
Cameras.
Cameras? Okay. So what do we got for INA?
Checking that those towns, how they're looking for them.
No bad comments?
Good. If you guys have any questions or concerns, Jerry's here to answer if there's anything council might have.
So we, I mean, just to get a price on it, Jerry, I mean, to, I guess we need to pick out the spots.
Yeah, I've been waiting on the city and the county to get together and find where they want, so I can bring my guy out, so that, so a representative from the city and the county can show them what they would like to have. I can't get a price till I know what you guys want. That's what I've been waiting on. So whenever you're, whenever somebody's ready to do that, I'll bring somebody out and get you a quote.
Okay, okay.
We're currently counting, we're waiting forever, so we want to sort of.
We just need to pick out our spots that we think they need to be.
Right, right. Yeah, I've been waiting on Rob. I can't get nowhere with him.
If we do all the entrances, that's seven cameras. I don't know if you guys want any parks, square, I mean, I don't know what you guys want. Essentially, you guys remain wants to improve it, so how many do you want to get?
How big of a pain is it if we start with, say, seven and we find some more spots?
We can always add, we can add or subtract as you guys see fit.
And then what, what all exactly comes with the sixty dollars a month? I don't know.
It's just, it's just a maintenance program, they call it, where our guys, they get up, they clock in the morning, and they, everybody that's got a maintenance program with this, they log into your system and they, they do a checklist on it, make sure it's up and working all right. You can do it yourself, but a lot of people prefer us to, excuse me, a lot of people prefer us to do it, you know, for that sixty dollars a month. And a lot of people honestly do it themselves, and we don't even have to do it for them. So, and that's something the installation crew will go over with your people, you know, and show them how to do it, so they can take care of yourself if they want to. It's just a maintenance fee, they call it.
Then it doesn't matter if you have two or twenty cameras?
No, it doesn't make any difference. It's, it's the same amount, yeah.
These are the entrances, I wrote down, if I'm looking at the math for you guys, I'm gonna look at it, I mean, that's seven over. I know the ones on two eighty-one, you could have.
I know I did talk to Rob a week ago, and he found eighteen locations where he thought he needed cameras, but he was gonna get with the city because he didn't want overlap. He didn't want his to overlap with you guys or vice versa, but I don't know where he's.
Well, I tried talking to Robin, and that was a new point, so.
He should just tell us where he wants his and about the.
And I don't know if you guys want any parks, we could ask the rec. I mean, I don't know if the rec.
And I think the fire department's considering putting them on all the buildings, aren't they, Marshall? All the fire department buildings. I mean, once we get it started, like, say, we can add and subtract as you guys see fit, but to get the ball rolling, I think somebody needs to pick the ball up and run with it here. So, so I know what to do next.
Jamie's gonna reach out to somebody over at the county and see what we can get going and move on with that.
How much were those, Jerry, the ones for those to read tags? How much are we looking at?
I know that, they're, they're anywhere from two thousand to twenty thousand dollars, guys. I know that day at the meet, when he was out at the fire department meeting, didn't he tell us that thirty-four hundred dollars would buy a pretty good camera, Marshall? Didn't he say that?
He told us between twenty-eight and thirty, thirty-two or thirty-four hundred.
Yeah, I'm like the tag reader part, that was like an extra, like twenty-three hundred dollars per camera.
And then the life expectancy of a camera was, you said, three, five years?
Yeah, the warranty on all the hardware is five years. So if you have a camera at four and a half years, it's messing up, you don't like the way it's performing, just call them up, they'll come down and replace it. But it is five years on everything, and it's all American-made stuff. I know, I called for Marshall the other day for all the fire department buildings. He said to figure, this was just an average, without him looking at all the buildings, he figured fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per building for all the fire department buildings.
And nine in main.
And then prairie and nine.
Eight of them. Eight covered the entrances. Ninth and main, coming by the.
Baltham?
Baltham.
Yeah, but that's why I said, like, if we were gonna get one in the parks or something, if it was on that road, that would catch anybody coming off on either side. So that's why I said if we're gonna do the parks, I feel like we would need that one there. Or if we take our camera instead of doing it on West and ninth, we take it out in the section, and it's gonna get that traffic all the way on Forty.
Those are powered by a hundred and twenty volt, Jerry?
Yeah. And then something, if you guys have a question where you want one, when my technician comes out and gives an estimate, he can give you an idea of where you might want to put one, you know what I'm saying, in conjunction with another one or something like that. That'll give you their take on it or their idea, how they think you should do it. I know they just did the city of Ellsworth, they did the whole town up there here in the last month.
I think we ought to get a quote at least for at least our entrances, and I would be interested in putting them around town in some places, too.
Is it not pretty standard? I mean, you put one of the, I mean, these are all gonna be the same cameras if you put one in one location, that's gonna be the same price for all of them, wouldn't you think? Or is that?
It just depends on which type. They've got all different types of cameras. They got what they call a bullet head camera, then they've got, they've got one that's got three cameras in a dome, that'll shoot like three or four different directions, and those are all different prices. That would just be something, they write that up in the blueprint or the diagram when they come out and give you their suggestion on how, what you should use at what spot.
With any camera that it is, it's five-year warranty on it?
Yeah.
I mean, what gets me is investing in all these cameras at first, and then it's kind of like a firefighting gear. After so long, are we gonna end up replacing them all at once or close to? That's what gets me is, I don't know, I have mixed feelings about it. Just in the long run, it's just the nitrate plant, we have to spend money on it every few years. I don't want to have to redo all these cameras every so often, it's kind of my concern.
Jerry, is it something that the city, to address that concern, can we alternate replacement on those?
Or we can just set it up to where we save when we know we have to, that's part of the maintenance that we've been working on.
Here's the thing, just because the five-year warranty goes out doesn't mean the camera's bad.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, you buy a vehicle, they give you a ten-year warranty on it, or a hundred thousand miles, you drive it six hundred thousand, doesn't mean after the warranty's gone, it's bad.
Oh, but I asked the guy, when Jerry was here the last time with that guy, I said, how long do they last? I didn't say how long his warranty, and you said three or five years. So that's what stuck in my head. I didn't ask how long warranty is, how long do they last?
As far as the life expectancy, I can find that out tomorrow for you, but I, right now, I don't know what the life expectancy is. I've never, would never, I've never been in that discussion of it.
Can you get that information and send it to Jamie?
Yeah.
She can pass it on to the rest of us.
Yeah, I can do that, sure.
Would it pretty much just be the entrances, the seven or eight that are the high-quality license ones, the rest don't have to be like that?
Yeah, it'd be interesting looking into it, Jerry. I'm okay with this. Victoria came up, we can, we can see what it costs and go from there. I guess we don't really know until.
I would almost like, from what they're here, to kind of look through town and see if they've got some suggestions of where, and maybe include that separate from the entrances.
Yeah, they can do that.
It'd probably be like the parks, and for me, the truck parking needs some there.
The truck parking needs to be there before we put a camera there.
Right. We need to be looking at that.
Something that we can look at later, when the parking is there, the truck parking, because I feel that's something that we definitely need to have.
Sure.
We're gonna have that there, we need to have the security there.
And that, there again, if I get him out here, if you guys got a representative that can help show him around where he needs to go and what, and just ask him what he thinks, what his opinion would be on putting it here or there or wherever, you know.
Sounds good. Anybody have any other questions for Jerry this evening? Okay, thank you, Jerry, appreciate you being here and answering questions. Okay, all right, unless there's anything else under old business, then move on to new business. Okay, football field.
Last week, I was helping up at the football field. Josh Meyer talked to me. The school, from what I understand, would like to do something different with the concession stands and the restrooms up there. We've got a lease, and I've read through the lease, I think. They're allowed, I mean, they can do whatever they want. They were just kind of wanting our blessing if they decided that they wanted to tear it down and start over. If we were okay with that, I told him I'd put it on the agenda and we could discuss it.
Is this, there are another one? Because I did a lease at some point.
Yeah, we extended it.
We extended the lease, yeah.
Three years, you're on the team.
I remember doing it. Nope.
Not in your contract at eighteen? Yeah, right there. Did you miss a pinch?
No, I know, but there's an extension here. This isn't anything I prepared. I wonder if he did it, if Josh did it.
I actually think the. Just go off the last lease, I mean, that's, I mean, their lease runs out in twenty thirty-eight. But I think the original lease is still.
They renewed it in two thousand eighteen. Whatever, I mean, regardless, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I mean, they aren't asking for anything from the city if they decide to do something, but, you know, the bathrooms up there aren't very accessible for the elderly and stuff like that, and they just, they'd like to do something different.
Yeah.
Whatever they want to do.
Yeah, I mean, the best thing would be just an agreement that whatever they start to finish.
Which I would think if they started, they're gonna finish it. Especially if they tear that one out, they don't have a choice but to finish it.
We just need consensus on that, John?
Is there any firm plans or is this just discussion?
Just discussion.
I think we're not ready. I think they need to just.
Because it says in the lease that they're granted the privilege of erecting improvements of any kind of nature on said premises.
So we'll wait till they have something concrete, and then we'll move from there.
I think just the city's blessing at that point would probably work.
Okay, all right, anything else under, under that? Okay, school flags.
I was also approached about the, the flags that they put out for all the games, to see if the city would be interested in purchasing four of them for the four corners of the square to be put out on game days. And a person at the school would actually take care of it, putting them up, taking them, so I mean, we don't even have to, they just want to know if we'd purchase them. Be like the banner ones. Seventy dollars a piece. I just have to get three, you already got one out at the corner. You guys have one nutshell over here?
So the bank's got one, too.
So maybe two?
I don't know where, I don't know where that one on.
I mean, the inside. Well, I don't know if that's what they were talking about. They just said they'd like to put them on the four corners of the square.
Yeah, later's fine with me.
I mean, it's under my spending limit, so I'll go talk to her if you guys.
I'm fine with that.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, just go talk to them, see what they got to say. Okay, moving on, Dylan's building. We've had this building here for five years. I wanted to approach council on this to find out, I think we need to do something with This building's just sitting there. It is being used periodically by police and I believe the sheriff's department.
Not anymore.
Correct?
It was for dog.
Not anymore?
It was just for dog training.
Okay, so as of now, it's not being used at all then? Okay, I think we need to do something with this building. I would like to see, the city offices move into that building. Like to see a, maybe perhaps even a meeting room in there for people to possibly rent, use for graduation, reunions, and I think we need a proper city council chamber. And if we did something like that, this could become the police department here in this building, right here in this office. So I want to get your opinions on that thought.
I've talked about that before, so I'm not opposed to it. I'd rather have the police department over there and maybe lease this building out, was my idea. Maybe have, just having everybody over there, separate offices for all the.
I don't think you could lease this out, though.
I see what you're saying. I think.
Because I had the idea, too, I just haven't brought it out here yet, but.
I think that would be a better building, but I'm open to any ideas. What do the rest of you think?
I think it'd be great to have something there, but I think that'd be a lot of money that I don't know if we really want financially, want to spend. I mean, I hear you, that it'd be great to have something there, but with all that we've done the last couple of years and what we got on the books as far as leases and loans, I mean, I don't think that'd be something we can do.
But this is not something I'm planning, I want to do within the next year or anything like that, but this is something I think we need to, to look at and start planning for it. You know, we could probably budget for it at some point.
I mean, I'd be open to looking at planning, but I mean, I don't think it's a short-term thing at all with what we got out there.
This is definitely going to be long-term on this, and it's gonna, probably gonna be something after, that may take place after all of us are gone off of this council. So, but I'd like to see something get started on that. It's just sitting there in, here in the middle of the town, and nothing's being done with it, and I think we need to do something with it. So, I'm, again, I agree with you. I know that, so, we're spending a lot of money. We're looking at, we're looking at all these cameras, we're looking at other things. I mean, it's a lot of money, so we're gonna have to definitely plan this out. So yes, but from what I'm hearing, it sounds like everyone around this table wants to see something done with it, and I think we can start planning. I mean, that's the least we can do right now. So, okay, unless anybody else has anything for that? Okay, moving on to emergency plan for the library. The other day, when the alarms went off at midnight, Laura was having some concerns in regards to the library. I think, I've talked with the chief, and I'd like to get some people together, Laura, chief, Jamie, myself, somebody from council, somebody from dispatch, somebody from EMS and fire department, and see if we can all make sure that we're all on the same page to cover this, because you had two families that showed up there and the doors weren't open. I've talked with the chief, we're gonna look into planning on getting the doors open at some point, testing the doors to make sure that they do work, because we've never really had a chance to test them, not since I've been there, and I've been there twelve years. And we've, I've never seen them tested when the door's open, when the alarm goes off for tornado, you know, from what I understand. And correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but aren't those supposed to go off and seek shelter?
If it's in our zone. When they said seek shelter, that was just Maxville. That's why ours didn't get set off.
Okay.
As I say, it would only.
Because I was out.
Probably when the sirens go off.
For tornado, and not for seek shelter, unless it's here.
It would be.
Right, okay.
And see, in Maxville, they, that's why the sheriff came out, because the National Weather Service out of Dodge City put out for Maxville to seek shelter. Well, sheriff came out and he said, no, it's, there's nothing here, because they were saying there was rotation, and the sheriff said, no, there's not, we're not setting them off. So that's why they didn't set them off in Maxville.
Okay, okay.
Or they would have, and they would have had their, whatever shelter they have, but.
Well.
The doors in the.
The door's unlocked at the library when sirens go off, is that what you're saying? They're supposed to, yes. But I've never, I've never witnessed it. I've never seen anybody test it and I've never been there during a test.
I guess the only time that you could probably test it is when they test tornado sirens, so...
Yeah, and I, you can, I can just go over dispatch. If you want to set up a timer, I can go over dispatch and they can, they'll put it out a couple of days before. We'll put it out online and then they'll do a page that's saying they're gonna test the tornado sirens. And then they'll just set them off.
Right.
But we have to notify the public before we just set off our sirens.
Right. So if council doesn't have a problem, just like to get that, have Jamie, can you contact us? I'll get, I'll send you an email tomorrow and see if we can get those people to show up. Uh, if council's okay with that, um, we can go ahead and get something set up, so we can just get a plan together to make sure that we do have the people in this community notified that when something like that happens, they can go to the library, because it is a designated city safe shelter.
Yeah, it would be a concern to advertise that and not test it. Because if it didn't work...
Yeah.
You can test on Tuesday, the first Tuesday of the month. The second they test, they'll test them.
Yeah, but if it's open, it's open hours.
That's the, that's the main concern.
Lock it.
That's the concern right there Laura brought up, that it's, if you, if we're open. I mean...
We can't just lock them right before they're gonna test them?
I don't know. You'd have to, I'm not sure. I don't know how that works with the, the magnetic locks. I'm not sure who controls that. You said that dispatch controls that? With the, the magnetic locks?
No, they just control setting off the sirens.
Okay, so who could, that's my question. Who controls the magnetic locks?
Well, if they set the sirens off and the doors close, shouldn't they automatically?
Well, should, yeah, it should.
But as I'm saying, that's how we could test it.
Right. I, like I said...
She's probably got the control system for me.
That's what I was, that's what we were wondering, if he has control of the, because he's, apparently he sets the, he sets the timer on that, because those doors unlock at 7:30, if I'm not mistaken. And then they close, they lock at seven. When I lock up, they're, they're supposed to be locked, again, but there's that word again, supposed to. You know, a lot of things are supposed to happen, you know? The world was supposed to end in, in 2012. That never happened. Okay.
I said, let's get all the info and then if we want to meet or whatever, and then possibly run a test too before we meet and put it all out there. I mean, it would be good to, I guess, know, because there are probably some people that depend on that, but it is, I would think it's, if the siren goes off, if the siren doesn't go off in town, then it's probably not gonna be opened up. And if people go up there, they can't expect it to be opened up.
You might have to ask the fire chief to...
As I said, it's probably something Mike, Tori, the administrator should know just how it works.
At one point in time, I do know there was an emergency action plan for the city of St. John that, that was included with the school. And I know he was in part of this, or he was part of that.
He was part of the LAPC, right?
He still is.
Yeah. I haven't, I'm supposed to be a part of it too, but we haven't heard anything. I talked to Misty the other day and we haven't had any meeting at all for a while, but I think that's due to COVID, so... Okay, well, anyway, we'll, we'll get the, all the particulars worked out and we'll get all, we'll notify people that we'd like to show up for that.
Mark, you can find out if those doors will work if power is out too.
I'll talk with, I'll talk with Josh tomorrow and see what he says. Maybe we can get some more information and I'll pass it on to Jamie to pass it on to the rest of you, okay? All right. Okay. Unless anything else for that, police location. I was speaking with Chief Perez and to be a little bit more accessible to the public, we were talking perhaps maybe having her move a desk down here and to the front office. I know it's kind of crowded as it is, but...
Our sitting area won't be able to be sat in.
Do you ever have anybody sit in there?
No.
Okay, then.
Yeah, that's even better.
Yeah. But anyway, that's, that was my thought on that, and I'm speaking with chief and Jamie. Neither of them had a problem with that, but I wanted to bring this to council to get your thoughts on that.
See a problem, I guess.
So if everybody's okay with that, then we can, I guess we can start looking to have... To think about it?
I'm not carrying my desk down here, so it has been my... Are you sure that desk won't come out of my office, because the, the wall was built around that desk?
Have you, have you had people kind of have a hard time going up the steps?
I'm never up there. I sit with Marshall sitting during the day if I'm in here, so... Yeah, she already sits in here, so...
Yeah.
You can just have a big desk and we don't have to worry about it.
I'm sure that we can get a chainsaw there and take care of your desk, no problem.
I'm on it.
Okay. All right.
Do you want the emergency plan? Do you want that kind of old business?
Yes.
Okay, and the last thing that I was, had on there was code enforcement. At one point, we had talked about having a code enforcer here in town. I once again wanted to talk with council about this to see what their thoughts on possibly hiring a code enforcer on that to enforce all of the ordinances here in the city.
Once again, cost to hire a code enforcement person?
I say one hiring law enforcement.
I personally don't think it's a full-time position.
No, I don't either.
I think that if we wanted to hire a code enforcer, it should maybe be a part-time police officer. That's my personal opinion.
What are your thoughts, chief?
We can't even find a part-time officer.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can't even find a full-time officer.
Who wants to be a dog catcher?
Now, if we did hire a part-time code enforcer, this would have, this would be someone that would need to have the support of council and the city administrator, so she could properly do her, his or her job. You know? Because you know, you know doggone well that it's, it's probably gonna end up causing some problems here and there. So, toes are gonna get stepped on. Feelings are gonna get hurt. And people are going to be...
I feel like we've been doing a pretty good job on keeping up with code enforcement, other than the, the junk vehicles, and that's not something that we can technically do anything about right now.
I think we've gotten along pretty good.
I just think if you're gonna have like a part-time officer do it, like you can't pick and choose which codes you're gonna enforce, you're enforcing or forcing all.
Right.
Yeah.
That includes parking on the wrong side of the street, parking your junk vehicles, vehicles on the road with not proper registration, puts all of that, so...
There's probably code enforcement stuff that we haven't even looked at for 20 years that's on our books.
Right. There's some stuff that's probably just completely outdated that don't need to be on the books. So...
I don't know. I don't, I don't think it's a time right now. We've gotten along really good. Jamie and the guys have done a really good job so far. It's my opinion.
That's just yards and you don't really...
I'm sure there's a lot of stuff you can get into, code enforcement, whether you want to get into it. The only thing is, we need to really watch, because if you, if you hire somebody part-time to do that, it's gonna make our court system and it's gonna make our expenses go through the roof. Because John will have a lot more.
We're at the 8:30 Wednesday.
But that's what I'm saying, it's, it's gonna be a domino effect. You're gonna hire somebody. You're gonna have a lot more court cases from municipal court. I mean, so there's gonna be a lot more extra time.
I mean, the, the big city ordinance is, I mean, the police still enforce, so it's not like, it's not like code enforcement's not being done. We've just picked up on the yard and the junk and...
It's the kind of stuff that they, they're going to appeal to, they're gonna appeal to the council. We're not, we're not gonna take it through municipal court necessarily. We, we've kind of eliminated the backlog in municipal court created by COVID at this point, so I'm not looking forward to it extending anytime soon.
Okay. I spoke my mind. Whatever you guys want.
Cut.
I'd say, this is a little, I don't know if it's necessarily a huge, a problem we want to take on right now, or a problem that's...
I think we've handled the big problems. I mean, the yard and the housing and...
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that's mine right now. I don't think, I think we've done a good job of it.
A lot of it gets cleaned up when you do your property code stuff.
Now, let me, let me make, let me just say this right now. I'm not taking anything away from what Jamie and Pam, Pam have done. You know, you guys have done a phenomenal job. Right? But there's other things that need to be taken care of that it may be missed. Okay? But again, I'm not taking away the job that you guys have done. They've done a really good job. So...
I mean, my, my initial concern, when I, I talked to Jamie about a code enforcement officer a long, several months ago, was dogs, but I think the dog problem. Has it slowed down a little bit, the dog body?
If we're being honest.
We try to, we just try to, we just try to recommend community, community policing at that point. Like, a lot of people know whose dogs are whose dogs, so call your neighbor instead of calling the police.
I had the impression it'd slow down based on what got filed in court, but maybe things just get...
Okay. All right.
Well, if there's more problem, we can do that more.
Okay. That's fine. Like I said, I just wanted to get everyone's opinion on this once again. Let's see, so, all right. Unless there's anything else...
Do you want to talk about those medical bills?
I forgot about those medical bills. I don't really want to.
It's all right, let's be cool.
Thanks, John.
You don't say who it is or anything like that. We've received some bills for individuals that were taken to law enforcement to Stafford County Hospital.
To get eval?
No, but an individual is in your custody and that individual suffers some kind of medical incident and they are required to seek help. The city does become responsible for those bills. But the issue here is, I don't believe they were in your custody. And so therefore should not be the city's responsibility. But it's not a ton of money, so I guess the concern is, do you want us to keep messing with it?
So basically, like, I confirmed to Tori everything, both, in, in both of these cases, they had asked for a ride over. When I called the hospital to discuss it, they said in their report that they were under police protective custody. So at that point, I had talked to John and we said we would just bring it up tonight, because...
Were we talking a hundred dollars, thousands, dollars?
Twelve hundred or something, so it was...
Um, over three thousand.
Oh.
Well, you just told, it gets me, is you just told us it's not our responsibility, they weren't under our custody.
It isn't your responsibility, but I'm charged by the hour, and so the question is...
We know that.
There's a point in the return if I'm gonna deal with something.
What are you gonna charge us to deal with this?
By the hour.
Three grand or less?
I don't know what it's gonna take.
Come on, you do. That's my...
Well, I can tell you right now, one of the, one of those bills, he's, that person is going to fight, so you might as well just...
Well, it's not...
Well, the thing of it is, is I don't think that they submit it to insurance though either.
They have to submit it to insurance, but most of the time, these people don't have insurance, is the issue.
The one guy does, because you had to give me his card.
Okay, well, then they need to...
Took a copy of it to send.
Then what needs to happen is they need to receive a letter that says, and the statute specifically requires the insurance to be billed.
So this is the...
Before the city becomes responsible.
Well, then, that's what I told them. And I don't think that that is what's on here.
How many, is that for three people?
Two. I forgot the third one.
Because one of them was forced to go.
No, they got the bill from the hospital.
So the individual said to bill it to us?
No, what usually happens is when they get administered, because of the situation, they don't go through the usual admission process. So the hospital may not know they had insurance to deal with.
I think her state...
In a lot of instances, it's an emergency or even...
Talked her into going, thinking it was her choice, but it really wasn't. She was gone.
And so they remain handcuffed.
So that one I can say just...
The process is a little, little complicated.
Can I reverse them?
If we, if we fought it and we won it all, are they obligated to pay our attorney fees or not?
No, I mean, if this isn't anything that's gonna end in legal litigation, you will never ever get a situation where you're getting your attorney's fee.
And then do it that way, but...
But the, the issue is here, the statute requires them to first, if the individual has insurance, to first bill the insurance. And if they don't have insurance before it gets down to the city level, the city's only responsible for paying the Medicaid, Medicaid bills at a low rate and private insurance. And so the city is responsible only for what Stafford County Hospital would have charged Medicaid or Medicare in that instance. And so the one other time the city dealt with this was related to an EMS transportation bill. And we said, we're overcharged here. Medicaid only gets, pays this amount of money. And so then EMS Stafford County then reissued your invoice with that Medicaid deduction. And it saved the city substantial amount. So you guys have done this before. It was just, in this instance, I don't think you guys were responsible at all. In the other instance, they were clearly in the custody of, there was a medical emergency that happened after the person was arrested or something.
So how confident are you, be paying zero?
I, I wanted to talk to you guys before I did anything.
But you can't, you can tell us what, we're dealing with cases even similar to this? You don't know what we're probably gonna pay you? You say you pay by the hour, but...
I, I mean, we've drafted a letter years ago. I'd have to go back and look at my billings. I mean, it's not gonna be $3,000 to draft a letter, but it's gonna be 20 minutes.
Yeah, I don't want to just get that bad.
I mean, I haven't even looked at these.
I would say if we're not liable and not responsible to pay them, then we fight it.
I think the one has...
If they were in our custody and we are required to pay it, then we need to pay it, but if we don't, if they weren't, then fight it.
I think we should just look at it as if, like, from my standpoint, yes, I talked her into going, but it was more as I made her feel like it was her choice, because she was way out there. Because if she would've said no, she was going anyways. Like, she was gonna be forcibly taken to the hospital. So I just think it's not really fair on their standpoint, because she was going. And I had to transport her. I wouldn't, she wouldn't even go with her mom.
Oh, um, we need, I don't want these individuals that are named in public.
Right, right.
So if we need to go into executive session.
I just don't want to say too much, I guess.
But if it's not our obligation, I'm not down to do it. So that's where I stand.
I just direct Jamie to, to spend a little time dealing with it, with me.
And I have the, I have the letter from...
She can even reword my letter.
I'm just saying, if we, if you don't fill and Tori doesn't fill that we're responsible for them, fight them.
Yeah.
If we're responsible for them, pay them.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, that's just how I feel about it. I mean...
If they could've left the hospital, then they weren't under the custody of...
Right. If they could've freely walked out and they weren't under our custody, then fight it. Put it on them.
I mean, the easiest way to think about this is if somebody's in jail and they get sick, then you have to provide medical care and the city's under responsible for that medical care. That would be the simplest explanation for that kind of situation.
Fine with that.
Everything's, we're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, unless there's anything else to discuss this evening, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sorry. I have a motion second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries, meaning adjourn.